Okay, I'd like to call to order the Whatcom County Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 10th, 2018. Would the county -- a clerk please call the roll?
Sot Paul Sidoo.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Tyler Byrd.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Red Brown.
Yep.
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Tim Baloo.
Okay, would you all rise and join me in the flag slot? Pledge your allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of announcements, please take your cellphone out of your pocket and turn it off or turn it on to silent. And if you'll be handing out paperwork to the council members, please make sure you give one copy to the county clerk who's sitting down here for our files. First up is several sets of minutes, and I'm going to split these. I need a motion to approve one minutes number one, two, three, seven, and eight.
Move to approve one, two, three, seven, and eight.
Sorry, one, two, three, one, two, three, and eight, that's what I want.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
What's the reason for not doing all?
Because I wasn't here for four.
We've decided that that is not a requirement, we can do them all.
Uh, okay, that's right, you're actually right. Okay, so.
Move to approve all of the minutes.
Move, and we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sidoo, seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six, zero, with Mr. Baloo absent. Next item up is an ordinance. This is now a public hearing, and just want to remind everybody, we're going to do two public hearings tonight, one is for a specific ordinance and one is for open session. For the specific ordinance, please speak only to the ordinance, and the open session, you may speak to any issue relevant to county council business. Audience members who've signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of our meeting will be called first and are asked to form a line behind the signs on either side of the chambers. If you were unable to sign up before the meeting, you will be given an opportunity to address the council once we've gotten through all the folks listed on the hearing sheets. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your comments. When a large group of individuals support the same position on an issue, we encourage the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group. The first item up is an ordinance establishing parking restrictions within 10 feet of U.S. mailboxes on all county roads. Is there a staff report? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing, if anybody wishes to comment on this particular ordinance. We have a sum total of zero on the sign-in sheet. They were seeing no people, I shall close the public hearing, and what's the wishes of the council?
I'm of approval.
Whoa.
Dispassion!
All of us did it.
All right, let's start that again, who's faster? Who moves approval?
I'm of approval.
Okay, okay, motion and a second, all right, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Byrd.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Sot Paul Sidoo.
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Mr. Baloo excused. Next item up is the open public session, and again, reminder that you can, you'll have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business. Before beginning to comment, please state your name and topic of interest for the record. If your last name is something other than Smith or Jones, please spell it for the clerk. Please make sure to speak into the microphone, please stand behind the signs located in the aisles as a courtesy to other speakers. Thank you for your cooperation, is there anybody who wants to speak in the open public session? All right, please come down.
My name's Yoshi Revell, R-E-V-E-L-L-E. Thank you, members of the audience, and staff, and members of the county council, and Mr. County Executive, wherever you are. I came, I am here to speak about the jail and justice system and addiction. First, I was here earlier when you all were talking about ways of preventing incarceration, and I thought it was a wonderful discussion. I would add to that, that it's very simply this, that the kinder the system is, the lower the crime rate's going to be. The crueler the system is, the more the crime there's going to be. Human beings are like that. We respond to kindness with kindness, and we respond to meanness with meanness, and it's the same with the justice system and the jail system. The kinder that the justice system and the jail system is, the lower the crime rate's going to be, and the meaner that it is, the more crime there's going to be. Please take that into account in anything that you do on the jail system and justice system. The other thing about addictions, we all know that there are addiction problems with alcohol and opiates and meth and those sorts of things, but there's another addiction that we rarely speak about, is the addiction to money. Scientists have studied money and noticed that when we receive money, we have little pleasure sensors in the brain that go off, similar to when somebody's using meth, or opiates, or any other drug, and we literally get addicted to money, and we will do self-destructive things for money, just like we'll do self-destructive things for opiates, or meth, or alcohol, or any other drug. Money addiction is a real thing, and we will do self-destructive things to get it. And this is a discussion we need to have, that we're not having. It's shown in science that that happens, and anybody who reads the Bible or any other spiritual text will know that it's called greed, that we worship mammon, when we worship money, we do self-destructive things, and we do destructive things to our fellow human beings. We need to have this discussion, because we're doing a lot of self-destructive things to ourselves now, for the foolish thing called money. It's only a piece of paper, that's literally all it is. It does zero work, none whatsoever. Nature does work.
Thirty seconds, please.
People do work. Money does zero work. Face it, and hurt each other and ourselves all the time. Thanks you all for allowing me to share this with you, and I wish you all health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi.
I'll alternate between sides, if you'd like to come down.
Amy Glasser.
Okay. Yeah, it's fine.
Amy Glasser, Bellingham, Washington. I just wanted to get up here for once in a while to thank you all for the hard work that you're actually doing for the homeless. I hear we might get some land soon, which means Tent City, then up the pilot project. As long as things are going really good, I'm wondering if there's any chance of the county coming up with a warehouse that we could get for storage. I was in San Francisco just a couple of weeks ago, and the amount of people that are rolling around with carts, and they're like older than, as old as us, if not older, I just can't imagine being disabled or being elderly and having to have your life in a cart, and not being really able to do anything, because you can't bring your cart into anywhere. We have a mini version of that here, and we really can do something, and I think if people had places to store their stuff, not a teeny locker, but a place like a long gym locker, to get their things in there, they can walk around town and not be humiliated just because they have no home. And just that building of self-esteem and not being humiliated and not being embarrassed by having your stuff with you and being told you can't be anywhere, helps people to feel better, because we all know that one day being homeless affects you mentally, each day added, it just gets worse. So, that's just an added thing, if there's any chance of some warehouse being somewhere around town, that you can collaborate with a port or with the city, I'm sure we can get volunteers to build nice sturdy metal with security, and it really wouldn't be expensive, and would be so good for the people who are stuck outside. Thank you for all you're doing, and thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rhona Lurch, spelled L-O-E-R-C-H. I live in Everson. First of all, I want to acknowledge that we are here on land stolen from the first peoples, and at the same time gratitude that not all of them were murdered during that colony time, and we can learn from them today. I look forward to seeing those, this acknowledgement on the arch of healing and reconciliation one day. My point for today is to thank you so much for the work you're doing for the homeless, that you extended the time apparently in an amendment today to a year for the tents out on the Northwest Road property. Thank you so much. It would be kind of, kind of impossible, I hope that passes you tonight, that would be difficult to try to move such a camp every six months. I would also like to encourage you, because you've been doing such a great job here, to do this, to find a space to allow for tiny homes. This would be a way more permanent kind of village that exists as close as Seattle, and the people from Homes Now have been down there and have looked at them. I've studied online the Kiote Village down in Olympia, they just seem quite fabulous and well-run, well-managed, and the people who live there speak, actually brings tears to your eyes to hear them talk about being able to take a shower. So, just to segue off of what Amy said, in terms of lockers, I know that there is a project working on safe storage, and I hope you will all be willing to work on that. Because the city is really not helping much in this regard, I really look forward to you as leaders of the county I live in to continue to pursue these projects and help the homeless regain some dignity in our county. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Adam Lamb. I was here a couple of weeks ago and spoke to you guys about the ordinances that you guys are looking to pass concerning Cherry Point and the growth out there. I brought a handful of our members with me tonight, we have about 400 that live in Whatcom County. I know the Whatcom County Planning Commission is looking to repeal the Cherry Point-Ferndale suburban plan. I understand there are some particular reasons for this, but in the context you are rolling fossil fuel moratorium and resolution 2018.015, I want to reiterate that those of us in labor have real concern about how all of this will impact our jobs at Cherry Point. Whatcom Industries need opportunity, flexibility to maintain safely and competitively. Their operational flexibility equals work for many members. Finally, we also need to be attacking new industries to Whatcom, attracting, sorry. I'm worried that if the council passes these, it'll drive people away and drive business away. That'll affect a lot more than just the handful of people sitting in this room, that'll affect the whole county. Last two meetings I've came to, there's been a lot of people talking about homeless issues, which are horrible. If you guys shut down one of the biggest industries in here, those issues are only going to get worse, so I just want you guys to consider that. Thank you, have a good day.
My name's Ron Wilson, and I'm with the Labor's Local 292, and I've been asked to read this paper to help support the families.
Sorry, can you just use, bring the microphone closer?
Oh, okay, is that better? "We must preserve Whatcom Industries and the jobs and the families they support. In reading Resolution 2018-015, it seems that the resulting ordinances will likely cause harm to Whatcom County industrial companies, which will result in less work for union workers like myself. Economic development starts when nurturing industries you have. Here in Whatcom, we are lucky to have thriving companies and the good-paying jobs that they go with them. The Whatcom County Council also needs to implement policies that attract new industries. As you know, there are over 2,100 family wage jobs that currently exist at Cherry Point, and another 7,000 indirect and induced jobs that will, that are created by Cherry Point companies. We must be able to assure our children and grandchildren that they will have the same opportunity for good-paying jobs, jobs and economic opportunity that we'll do. I urge the county council to protect and nurture Whatcom County's good-paying jobs." Thank you for letting me speak to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, so I'm Hannah Holt, I'm with the Labor's Local 292, and I have worked out at Cherry Point many times over the years. I am fortunate that I am able to have a job that provides for my family and with good pay with all the insurance we get, the tax revenue they contribute also helps us. It, I'm, yeah, sorry. I'm here to ask you to support Cherry Point companies, the job they support, and the tax revenue they contribute. It appears to me that this council has become hostile to the industrial business sector in Whatcom County. These are some of the best-paying jobs in the area, and we need them as have I need them myself. The fossil fuel permit reforms that you are considering will reduce work opportunities at current Cherry Point companies, and will discourage future industries from coming to Whatcom. Please protect the 2,100-plus family wage jobs at Cherry Point and preserve the 200 million in annual tax revenues from Cherry Point companies that fund schools and emergency services. Cherry Point is the economic foundation of Whatcom County. Let's make sure our children, especially our children, that they don't move away to have to have a good job with having good quality to life, having the good benefits for their own families, so that we can have our kids with us. Thank you.
Thanks.
If there's anybody else who wishes to speak, please, now's a good time to stand up and join the queue.
Catch any of that.
If there's anybody else who wishes to speak, now's a good time to stand up and join the queue.
Thank you, I wasn't sure what was going on, thank you very much. Good evening, I'm Joe Lorenzo, I'm the Business Manager, Financial Secretary of Local 191 of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and I just want to thank you all, first of all, for letting me come and speak in front of you tonight, and I'm here to express my concern regarding the ongoing fossil fuel moratorium and resolution 2018-15. I represent highly skilled electricians and union members throughout this Whatcom County, and the proposed changes laid out in Resolution 2018-015 caused me a great deal of concern. Whatcom Industry and Cherry Point Companies must have regulatory environment that allows them to be even competitive. When a Cherry Point company needs to make improvements to stay competitive, that means good jobs for my members and other union members throughout Whatcom County. This council must work with Whatcom County Industries to encourage future economic investment, economic growth, and jobs, not discourage it. My apprenticeship program right now is putting out 300 members that are apprentices. We need to have these good jobs remain here in the future for our people to work at. The permitting reforms in Resolution 2018-15 are unnecessary, in my opinion. They'll be problematic for existing Whatcom industry companies, and this will cost us jobs now, and unfortunately, I believe in the future. I think we need to work together to attract family wage jobs to Whatcom County and not drive them away, and I truly believe that I need to urge you and to support Whatcom Industries, and to focus on policies that balance economic opportunity and prosperity with environmental stewardship, safety, and improvements at Cherry Point, and I hope that you will do that, and I hope we can all work together in the future. Thank you very much for having me here.
Thank you.
Max Perry, Whatcom County, and I just want to give you folks kudos for your last session this afternoon, and talking about decorum, talking about business, talking about being civil and everything, and you were, you each had your own viewpoints, and it came out, and it was, it was great to hear that, great to hear those things, and nobody lost their cool, nobody lost their temper or anything else, and you just saw the problem, but you have not come to a resolution as yet. When you do, I would like you to go back to Washington DC and help the Senate and the legislature nominate a new Supreme Court Justice. Thank you.
Thanks, Max.
I'm sorry, but I've never had a member of the public show so much faith in this council.
Good evening, my name is Amy Coughlin, spelled C-O-U-G-H-L-I-N. I'm a member of, a citizen of Bellingham. I would like to reiterate some of my concerns that I brought up earlier today, and I would like to thank all of you for your due diligence on combating homelessness in our county. Considering the extreme situations surrounding homelessness, it is imperative that any organization providing emergency services have safety measures in place to protect the clients, public, staff, and volunteers. I would like to know what oversights will be implemented to assure that such safeguards are in place, and are there any officially required standards for the organizations that will provide these emergency encampment services? Examples would include volunteer orientation, training, applications and background checks for staff, code of conduct for all staff and board members, grievance policy and procedures, mission statement and board of directors clearly listed and available on the website, conflict resolution, crisis de-escalation, accountability and transparency regarding insurance and financials, zero tolerance for harassment, bullying, and inappropriate sexualized comments and behavior, as well as strict adherence to all applicable laws, regulations, and ordinances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Council members? Marcus D. Stidham, S-T-I-D-H-A-M. It's good to see you all again, and it feels more and more like community when I do come here with you guys, I feel like we have partners in what we're doing here with Homes Now, and that's what I'm trying to represent here tonight for you again is Homes Now. Thank you for your work, all of you, with that. I'm here to encourage you to not, to not back down when you find that different groups are going to resist when we pick a site. When you pick a site, you know, it's going to be not in my backyard, and it's going to be not in my backyard. Right now, we're looking at a pretty good site out there on Northwest, and I'd encourage you to just realize what's kind of skipped to the end of this, instead of like picking four sites and getting rejected on each one. Let's make this one go through, I really feel like this is a good one. I feel like it's got good services, good access, nice wide road, less chance for people to get hurt, straight shot into town, services, and, and so, that's really what I'm here to please, is that let's, let's just kind of, let's not pander to everybody who's going to say not in my backyard, because it's going to be everybody's backyard, and these are still our citizens, and we have to do this, and I appreciate all of your efforts with this, and applaud you for it, thank you.
Marcus.
Okay, Mr. Ellis, just before you do, Madam Clerk, I'm unable to find the voting sheet, I'm going to need later on.
Patrick Ellis, E4825, Alderson Road, Birch Bay. Not in my backyard. You know, one of my homeless students was looking for a place to pitch his tent two weeks ago, and he asked me if he could do it in my backyard, I said, "No, not in my backyard," but I did find a spot for him to hang out, pitch his tent, and be out of way of everybody. Now, that's one person I know that's homeless. Another person I know that is homeless is hiding out in some woods someplace, and I know where he's at. Okay? Now, I know three people that own property, they don't have water to it, or sewer, and people keep moving in with them one way or another. We need to do something. I know another guy who's renting a house, he's working hard, and people keep moving in with him, and it's, it's not a stabilizing effect for him. We really need to do something, and I think, hey, the county has land around in various places, oh yes, so does a port, find some agency, rent him a half acre or an acre, whatever it takes. Yes, I love sewers really well, but you could handle that problem another way, we have, we have outfits in the county, gas stations that don't have sewers, they just pump it out someplace in a truck. So, I'd love to see you do something. Thanks.
Thank you.
John Campbell, I'm on the subject of homeless encampments, storage areas. Last meeting, two weeks ago, we had the Lehigh presentation with Sharon Lee, and then there was a follow-up session in your conference room afterwards, where we were allowed to ask questions of Sharon, and in that question and answer period, we, or what I noticed, was they didn't necessarily do everything right the first time. They had a few snags along the way. For instance, there was, I think, a hoarder or two that ended up in one of their encampments that was a bit of a problem, and they were working on that situation. And on another note, you also mentioned that they were going to move one of their villages, and that created an uproar within the neighborhood, that they didn't want to see that happen, that they had grown accustomed to these new neighbors, and they liked it, so. And also, that's the discussion about the encampment Tent City in the Ballard neighborhood has shown that there's a decrease in some types of criminal activity in that neighborhood. So, I just, if you have any doubts about, you know, whether we have all our Ts crossed and Is doubted, we probably won't with these projects, so it's just, anyway, I just wanted to tell you about that. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, council members, my name is Eddie Yure, I'm the Clean Energy Program Manager at Resources for Sustainable Communities, and I just want to give some feedback to the council regarding your ongoing work for zoning code and comprehensive plan amendments for the Cherry Point UGA. I hope that you all got a chance to take a look at comments I sent in, co-authored by Alex Rommel yesterday, for the council to consider, and to some dozens of other comments from our supporters that have come in over the last couple of weeks, I hope you get a chance to see those, so I don't want to repeat exactly what we wrote, but rather just really, you just take this opportunity to emphasize how important the work you're doing, and how paying careful attention to it and taking time on it is meaningful for, and is going to be meaningful for decades to come in the work that you're doing, and know that, you know, folks like, like here in the room, also, I know that other elected officials in King County, and Vancouver, Washington, Anacortes, and Tacoma, Washington, are all looking to see what you do as an example, leading the way for making, for really improving the way that permitting is done for major industrial projects and dealing at major facilities like the oil refineries, as we're in this energy transition, where we know that those refineries are going to be here to stay as long as there's a demand for their products, but we know that in 30 years, there isn't going to be a demand for those products like there is now. And we know that worldwide, nationally, and locally, most job growth in the energy sector last year was in the renewable energy sector. Already, wind and solar energy are employing more Americans, more American workers than coal, oil, and gas combined, that's where the growth is happening, and that's something that we have to take into account, being a community that is so dependent on these oil refining industries, and will be for some time to come, for sure. And nothing you're doing here is going to be driving these businesses away, they're here to stay for some time. But what we can do is improve the process when we're looking, when we're to be on the hook for projects that could come about that may never be permissible to begin with, why should we waste time and resources of the county going through long environmental review processes when we know that their impacts upfront are going to make them unpermissible? So, what you did today, by asking staff to make coal storage and transfer facilities prohibited use, is monumental, and it's wise, and even however unlikely it would be that another coal export facility could come around at any point in the future to, say, use one of the existing peers. of the existing peers as a
Thirty seconds, please.
... terminal for that, though maybe unlikely. Closing the door on that now is the wise thing to do. And, you know, you never got the opportunity to make a decision on that coal port, but had you, you probably would have seen something happen like in Calhoun County where their hearing examiner denied shoreline permits for a coal terminal because of the significant unavoidable impacts of that. And, you know, that decision, that was lawful and done in accordance with county policy, now getting challenged and fought over by those companies, dragging the county into long fights just for doing what they had to do, and thankfully, you were able to avoid that. But by closing the door now, we're going to prevent the future outcome like that from happening. So thanks again for all your work, and appreciate it, and hope to have future conversations about this. Good night.
Anybody else who wishes to speak at the open public session? Seeing none, we'll close the open public session, and we'll shift over to finance. Mr. Chair.
All right.
Mrs. Seduh.
So we have three items from the consent agenda, and I think we can do that in one vote.
You can.
Okay. So the first one is request authorization for the county executive to award bid 18-36 and enter into a contract between Watcom County and Foss Maritime Company for the annual dry docking, repair, and maintenance of the Watcom County Chief Ferry in the amount of The second item is request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between Watcom County and PUD number one of Watcom County to provide funding through the EDI program for the Grandview, I-5, North Gate, and Delta Tech Fire Systems Supply Pipeline, Pipeline Project as a loan in the amount of $800,000 and a grant in the amount of $800,000 for a total contract amount of $1.6 million, AB 2018-204. The last item is the request authorization for county executive to enter into a contract between Watcom County and Opportunity Council to support the 22 North Housing Development Construction Projects, expanded scope which supports the critical features designed to enhance and sustain the housing construction such as improved security camera coverage, enhanced side access features, and more durable solid services in the amount of $100,000, AB 2018-205. All these three items received a vote of 3-0, and I so move for approval.
So it's been moved for approval and discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes 6-0 with Mr. Blue excused.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is from the Finance and Administrative Services Committee is the resolution authorizing the allocation of REIT I funding to support the construction of a multi-use building expansion at the East Watcom County Regional Resource Center from May 8th, the resolution, AB 2018-131. This also received a vote of 3-0. I so move for approval.
And for the record, we are also incorporating the additional information in the green packet and the substitute resolution in the orange packet. So I have a motion.
Yes, I just wanted to say that the initial asked amount was $425,000, but the, after going through the design changes, it's now $115,000, and this is the resolution, and this is the, actually, the new picture of the new building, which is going up in eastern Watcom County, and I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay. So we have a motion. We don't need a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes 6-0 with Mr. Blue excused. Next item up is from Public Works.
Yeah, we had a presentation today from Safe Storage, and they brought us five sites in this downtown area that would be appropriate, could be appropriate. There were some questions, I think, that were not answered today, so I don't want to move ahead. I will say that we voted in committee to recommend the courthouse parking lot site, and, but I would like to hear from council members who still had any questions.
Mr. Seduh.
I would move that we change that to the Lottie Street parking lot site. It allows us to do the program and retain parking.
Which is, which one on the map?
B.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from
It has the same score.
What number is that letter?
It's B.
B.
Yeah. Need your names.
Oh, Brittany Jones.
Yeah, you can.
Herman Gilmore, G-I-L-M-O-R-E. So that's the motorcycle parking and the hashed, hashed area. Yeah, that would work, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm fine with any of them, so. Okay. I'll second that.
The other one I liked was the one next to the Dropbox, because that space is unusable for anything else.
I think that's fair, too. Yeah, that's a good point, too. Actually, ma'am, Chair.
Yep, Mr. Bird.
Deputy Executive, I mean, you're probably not going to have this answer because it's just totally random, but the motorcycle parking, is that ever full?
So Site B is, it shows in the packet, the motorcycle parking off of Lottie Street. There's probably about six or eight different slots for motorbike parking. When we were out there, Rob, I, and myself thought that it was probably half-full at most times, and very rarely totally full.
The site, the amount of property that we would be looking at would probably, we're guessing, take only two of the motorcycle parking lots and spots in addition to that hashed area.
That site over here with the motorcycle? I believe we have security around the building, or security cameras around the courthouse. Would those cameras cover that site?
There is conversation about that. Tyler Schroeder again, when we're out on site, we have to double-check. There's some cameras that are on top of the courthouse roof in that location, and then one in the rotunda. We're not entirely sure there's video camera coverage. That's another detail that we're going to have to work out with the Safe Storage group, is just how it plays into our CCTV, closed circuit recordings, and how that would be able to use for monitoring. We're not entirely sure we're able to actually use our system for their purpose, but that's one of the details that we'll work out once council makes a selection. There is a video, a camera that points to the south, to the other parking lot, that does probably have better coverage going south rather than to the parking lot to the north here. But we still need to work through those details, and we're not entirely sure exactly how that's going to work out.
Mr. Donlon.
So A, the Site A, the Site B score the same. The difference is whether we're taking our parking away or some motorcycle parking away. I'm kind of leaning towards taking our parking away, but I prefer that.
It's because he rides a bike.
Well, I live close.
And he lives close.
Mr. Bird.
I mean, we park there one day every two weeks. I think it's more about the staff needing more parking, and the county executive has made that apparent, that we need, there's a long waiting list for people in this building that are trying to find places to park downtown, but, I mean, you do bike. I mean, there is a seventh seat once every two weeks open, but.
Just to be clear, so actually, I didn't know, so these, these spots during the week are not, they're used for the equalization board, and they're used for us, and then they're county staff other days.
I thought that's how it worked.
The, the, the two spots, so to the south of the courthouse, there's three designated county spots for Tuesdays for the council use as well as Board of Equalization. On the other days, those spots are available for pay, because that, that parking lot to the south of the courthouse and on the east side is the designated area for pay for, for public, not designated directly for employees.
Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Brenner, and then Mr. Seduh.
I got a question. Do you, have you and the executives talked about this? What site do you recommend? Or do, have you gotten that far?
Yeah, the administration really hasn't looked into it for priority. We're like, we're waiting for direction from the council and then working through it to that point. There's both impacting parking spots, and so from that situation, I think that either or would, would be fine if that's what council so chooses.
Well, maybe I should just put the question a little different. Are there any of the sites that do have, that we know have adequate video?
The site to the south is a better site for video access, with a caveat that says we're not entirely sure they're going to be able to use the county's closed circuit TV. We have to double-check that.
Mr. Seduh.
I think this is a decision which is best taken by the administration. We can give you, I would propose that we, as council, give this provision to the county administration to pick one of those A or B and work with the group, and we're not really knowledgeable about each details and their suitability, and I believe both the parties like both the sites, and let them figure it out, what is the best, and, and I believe that they will make the right decision. So I would say that let the administration handle that.
Can I also say one more thing? I just want to, I wasn't going to do this, but I think I have to. I wanted to put in a pitch for a request for possible monetary donation towards the project as well. And this could be a request at a future time, nothing at this moment, but just have a request that you're open to a possible monetary request in the future, or, you know, possibly letting us tap into an electrical source for a security camera or some, something of that sort. Because I feel like we're all in this together, and it's going to take all of us contributing to this project to make it happen. It's not going to happen, you know, with one of us, one group. So city, county, individuals, service organizations, nonprofits, businesses. I think we're all going to need to contribute to this, and I think, you know, the county having some skin in the game is going to help. So I just want to put that pitch in there.
So a couple of comments. One is, I discourage you from seeking having us put in electrical, because it's, the electrical may cost more than the lockers. And to explain that, you have to, you have to run it, say, underground, which means you've got to dig through the concrete, you've got to put in conduit, you've got to, you may have to run it 100 feet. It's extremely expensive to do, and it's very difficult to reproduce. So if you use, if you design a system that has solar power, then it's standalone, and you can drop it in at different locations. You'll find it much easier to, to scale it up over time than a system that requires, you know, in one place that the power may be 10 feet away, in the next place it may be 200 feet away. So I would encourage that. And the second thing is, I'm certainly open, as a council member, for financing, and tonight when I get home, I'm going to give you 100 bucks of my own, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Tyler, but most of the locations that we were looking at, the electrical would come from, like, existing on a building, a power pole, something like that. It wouldn't be like wiring it into the actual locker. It would come from something existing.
Yeah, so one thing.
Yeah, as we, as, as, as Rob, I, and myself are out, I'm walking through the different sites, there's different locations where electrical may be available. That just gets into some of the details. If, if council is interested in moving both A and B, I think at this time, there's a lot more work and analysis to kind of happen, and that's a fine decision to be made today. And then we can do that work with the Safe Storage Group and, and provide more background back to council, if there isn't one that stands out to you all.
Mr. Seduh.
I really like the, what Mr. Schroeder has said, actually, one or all the five sites. I don't think that we, in principle, have any issue with that. I think you guys have an issue of money, what is actually workable, what is not workable. All these sites, at least you have looked at it, they may be marginally different, but they will work. So I would suggest to the council that rather us getting into the minutia, let the people who know the more details and this group, let them work it out. What is financially feasible, as well as workable? I think five sites are all workable. You have to find the best solution. So I think that us making a decision will actually make it difficult for them to comply to that.
I second your motion. I second what you said.
Yeah, so my motion is, we should let county administration and the PNW Storage work out one of these five sites and report back to us, and we can at that time, bless it.
But.
So we have a motion, and a second, is there further discussion on this?
I thought Tyler looked like he wanted to say something.
There was a motion on the floor already.
Okay.
I made the motion to change the site to the Lottie Park.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so let's dispose of the motions in sequence. Sorry, I stand corrected, Mr. Bird. So would you repeat your motion?
Actually, I'll withdraw my motion, if, I mean, that's my word. Yeah.
So that motion's been redrawn. Thank you for correcting my procedure. So, Mr. Seduh, would you restate your motion?
Yeah, my motion is that the council authorizes the PNW Storage and county administration to work out one of these five sites and report back to the council for final approval, because there are many considerations.
Mr. Bird, is it Mr.?
Schroeder.
Schroeder, Schroeder, Schroeder.
To discuss there, I'm not sure there was a second, maybe a council member Brenner did. You know, the administration, I'd like to see a little bit more input from the council in regards to the sites. I think earlier I heard A and B, which was two of the five sites. It would be a better way for us to really get some traction to where to move forward with it, instead of just the five sites altogether, if council so chooses to provide a little bit more direction as it relates to it.
Mr. Seduh, and then Ms. Brenner.
I think we could provide more direction if we know better. I think that, you know, we are in the same situation. We are actually in a worse situation than two of you are, because you have researched it. And, and our aim is, is to actually allow this to happen, this project to go forward. That's what we, I believe that what is our thing. And if you guys want to go back and bring back three things which you guys are okay with, because financial consideration is actually bigger than picking a site because of electrical and other issues. So my suggestion is, is still for you guys to decide.
Brenner.
And I would be okay with any of the sites, but I'm not the expert. You guys are the expert on what to do. You're, you're, the administration would be the expert on what site's most cost-effective. So there you go. But I could be okay with any of them.
So I'm going to speak against the motion, because I'd like to see us make a decision tonight.
Okay. Be careful what you wish for.
So let's dispose of Mr. Seduh's motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
That fails.
3-3.
Fails 3-3. So, Mr. Bird, I think you, do you want to restate your motion? Do you want to reconsider it, or? Do you want to make a new motion?
Sorry.
Lottie.
Sorry. I'm out of there right now. The, I would make a motion for that the administration choose either between Site B or D.
B or E?
B or D. B or D. That's what you're, correct me if I'm wrong. You were writing direction between two sites?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out which one D was.
Uh, D's the, the site that the chair recommended behind the Dropbox.
Behind the Dropbox. Thank you.
I'll second that.
So is that a motion for the Dropbox site?
They choose between one of those two sites.
And I second that.
You're saying that you want that to
I second that.
Did.
Let's move forward.
Could I, could I have the liberty to encourage Mr. Schroeder to suggest which is his preference tonight, so maybe we can dispose of this tomorrow?
Not tonight. I won't be able to provide that much information. I, I think two sites is fine. Two sites gets us much closer to be able to look at the details and provide some background to it from council.
We have a second for your motion?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Brenner. Mr. Donlon.
I'll speak against the motion, because A and B are two top-rated, and I sort of respect the process that was used to put this together, so. So I think if we're going to give suggestions for two sites, it would be the two top rated ones, A and B. I would just say A.
I'm like a mall.
The two top rated ones are not A and B.
They are A and B. They were eight.
Oh, I see, sorry, sorry. Mr. Sada.
I think the scoring was done and I very much appreciated the way systemically it was done. But it's not the ultimate that, you know, it's still assumptions. And assumptions made by them looking into certain factors. Between these five sites, I don't think there's a big difference. Even on the scoring, if you look at percent difference, it's less than 10% difference between the highest and the lowest. So I'm okay. I just want to decide today and I, I'm okay with that. And Tyler needs a decision or shorten the list. I'm okay with that. So to me, if any two sites you pick, I'll vote for it.
So your motion, I remember, because that's what's on the floor, stating sites, B and D, is that correct? Okay, the, your motion was that they choose between B or D. And that was seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
What was your vote? Hi, okay, so.
Yep, there you go.
That succeeds, five to one. With Mr. Donovan opposed and Mr. Baloo absent, okay.
Opposed in the lockers.
Thank you, but opposed for good reasons.
All right.
So much.
Thank you.
All right.
And for all of your thoughtful and feedback and thank you, appreciate it.
Actually, thank you. I, I think this is an excellent project. Okay, next item up is request, to request to appoint a law library trustee for the Watcom County Law Library Board. AB's 2018 dash 207. I'm just trying to work out what we're actually voting about.
I moved to appoint the county executive.
Oh, I see, okay, sorry, yeah, right, fine. So the motion is for the county executive.
Oh, I think, did we skip? I'm sorry. Oh, you're right. It's the trustee, yeah, sorry.
I, pursuant to the statute, I haven't talked to any of you about this since this issue first came up. But pursuant to the statute, it's supposed to be the county, the chair of the county legislative body.
Okay.
Ari.
I nominate Mr. Brown.
I withdraw my motion.
I second that.
I move to appoint the, the chair.
Nominate you, I second.
Easy as.
I second and third that.
Okay, so the motion is to appoint the chair of the county council, no matter who they, he or she may be.
Yep.
So, okay. Who was the, who made that motion?
There was a second.
Mr. Bird. Mr. Donovan is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You're ugly, aren't you?
I'm sorry. Okay, that passes six to zero, fine.
I'll throw my cup on the floor every time I go.
That passes six to zero with Mr. Baloo excused. Next item up is to request to authorize the county executive to sign the class action opt-in notice form in Kane County, Utah versus United States.
I, I was the one who asked that this be put on the agenda because we received the opt-in form concerning the class action. Since that time, we were, we've received a little more. And I think I forwarded to use some discussion with the Washington Association of Counties. I think that was what it was. But I just received a little more information that confirms that actually Watcom County is one of, it's the third highest amount of all counties. So, I mean, it's about $70,000 that we're talking about for Watcom County. And as far as I can tell, there's really no harm in opting in. So it would be my suggestion that we do opt into the lawsuit.
Do you have your hand up? Yeah, Mr. Bird.
Is there a cost?
No, there's no cost. In, in fact, there's already been a judgment in favor of Kane County. So it's just basically a matter of figuring out, at least from what I can tell, how much people are going to get.
I'm, I don't know anything about this except it's in the county newspaper thing that we get. So there's a statute of payments in lieu of taxes was a statute that Congress did to somehow compensate local governments.
Right, I am not the expert on what this is all about. I consulted with Brad Bennett and unfortunately Tyler, Tyler probably knows more about it than I do.
I mean, I, I mean, I like the idea of like, we get money out of it, but I don't want to just join onto a lawsuit if I don't know whether it's right or like the good or bad thing in terms of whatever the policy is. So this is something in federal courts.
Right. What, it's, I have a somewhat of an understanding of the lawsuit. Congress, let me, let me refer to.
There was insufficient appropriations from one, 2015 to 2017, so money wasn't given back.
Right. In 2008, Congress significantly amended the payments in lieu of taxes statute by mandating, mandating full funding through 2014. Congress also repealed the original statute language that made the program discretionary and subject to annual congressional appropriations process. And, and this, in 2015 through 2017, due to insufficient appropriations, the recipients of this money, including Watcom County, didn't receive the full amount, full amount to which they were entitled under the law. Now, the federal government in this lawsuit argued that these payments were still discretionary. But the court ultimately found that they weren't and that the counties were entitled to the full amount. So that's what this is about. I, I, I don't see any, anything negative about us advocating for money that we should have been receiving under the law.
Or under someone's interpretation of law that's contested in the courts.
No, the court has actually made a decision in this case. And so we're at the point of just getting more class members and deciding how much everybody's going to be paid.
Further discussion?
I'm of approval.
I second that.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Baloo excused. Madam Prakes, I, I just wanted to ask you to come up for a second. I'd like to return to the previous item about the law library. And I'd like to suggest that we designate an alternate being the county executive unless you tell me that's problematic.
Well, I, in looking at the statute, I really don't think that there is room for anyone except for the chair of the legislative body to sit on the committee. Onerous position.
I, I, no, I know it's not terribly onerous, but I just, we, we have alternates for basically every position.
Right, but I think probably given the number of meetings they have, they can probably accommodate schedules.
Okay, all right, fine, all right. Just trying to be efficient.
It was worth a shot.
It was worth a shot. Okay. Next item up is council appointments to boards and commissions and committees. First issue is appointments to the Watcom County Business and Commerce Advisory Committee. Thirteen vacancies. Committee advises the Watcom County Council on issues including regulations and policies that could impact, impact local businesses, industry or economic development. AB to that, 2018. And if you can just hang on for a second, Ms. Brenner. First order of business here is we need to move approval to accept two late applications, if that is the wish of the council. And that's approval for consideration, not voting, not necessarily voting to appoint them.
Move approval.
That was.
Second.
Well, just a minute. We actually voted at the last meeting not to accept anything past the 11th. And they sound like great people, but it doesn't seem fair if we do that and not have opened it up to everybody else. I just feel like we should stick with what we had.
Mr. Chair, these two application were received before the last meeting.
But after the deadline. Right. And that's what we said at the meeting, last meeting. There was a question from one of you folks about should we allow any, and we said, no, we stick with what we, what we got by the 11th. I remember we voted on it.
So I understand what was voted on the last meeting. I wasn't at the last meeting. I would entertain a motion if someone wants to consider these.
I did, he seconded.
Okay, so the motion, Mr. Bird has moved that we consider these two people. And Mr. Buchanan has seconded it. Any further discussion? Mr. Donovan and Ms. Brenner.
One of them is June six, I, I remember that conversation because I, I, there were people who had requested us to keep it open. And we said we wouldn't. And one of these is June 16th. Which is, when was the deadline? One's June 11.
Five days later than the deadline.
So I, I mean, I, and there's nothing about these applicants, but there were people who specifically had, had said that they missed the deadline and wanted to get in, and these aren't those people. So I'm kind of uncomfortable on doing that, unless we want to open it up.
Yeah.
Push this aside now.
That's what we should do.
Open it up for another couple of weeks. I, I, I think that would address that thing.
Ms. Brenner.
I agree with, the only fair thing to do, otherwise what we're doing is giving two people a special, you know, special treatment compared to the others. I think their resumes were great, by the way. Oh, I think all those resumes were great. But either we, I think we either need to open it up for everybody for a couple more weeks or we need to say the 11th was the deadline, just like we said last time.
Mr. Sada.
I think to move the process forward, we can just stick with what Ms. Brenner has said, that that was the deadline, what we got, because these committees keep evolving. There will be other opportunities. Some people, you know, may want to, after two years or, plus we have to do that term also, stagger the term. So I would say let's move forward rather than discussing that and just accept the application which we had before the deadline. And, and then if something comes up later, we'll just deal with it.
Ms. Brenner, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Bird and then Ms. Brenner.
Okay.
A little closer than usual. The, in these applications, there is not a true information technology company. Speaking from that industry, I will tell you that I've gone through these and there is not someone that represents that category. And the, one of these applicants was asked to because of that and has submitted because he represents that category when no one else does. The, I, I think that we should be admitting that person because otherwise we will have an empty seat. Whether or not we admit the second person, I, I'll leave it at your discretion. But I feel strongly that we need to have someone in that position because it's vital to our community and the, the jobs that we need here.
Ms. Brenner.
I actually called as many as I could and I called Alpha Tech because they are techies. And I, they said they, they absolutely could fit into the category of IT. So we do have two people already.
Mr. Buchanan.
Never mind.
I got Mr. Bird.
Go ahead.
Alpha Tech does work with technology, but that position was specific to internet technology. And then they are not a specific internet technology company. It might be a subset of what they do at some very small level. But overall, it's not what their, their primary focus is. Whereas the applicant, that is his, his company's primary and sole focus. I would not feel represented as an internet technology company with Alpha Technology.
And I would add that the, they are both internet technology companies. One does the hardware and the other one does the software and they're very different. So, anyway.
Not fair.
Well, we're, whatever we decide about whether admitting them or not, they are very different skill sets and very different parts of the market. I think Mr. Sada, then Mr. Donovan, then Ms. Brenner.
I think the point here was to, to select the committee with people with the right skills for the purpose we are doing. I think we are really splitting here because we did put the wording in, that's our fault, that we made it so detailed. And, and we are trying to struggle. The idea is that represent a business voice to the council as well as economic development. To me, the economic development is more priority for this committee than anything else. But I, I will abide by what the rules are and I'm not really at a point to argue anything whether one qualifies or not. Whatever the, your wishes are, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I think the biggest thing is, is we choose the right people who's, who have the skill set for the task we are expecting them to achieve.
Mr. Donovan, then Ms. Brenner, then Mr. Bird.
Uh, maybe, I don't know if this is a resolution to it. The, I mean, one applicant was an hour and a half late, the other was like five or something days late. But if it's a specific position, could we hold that internet technology position open for two weeks? And this applicant would be included in that and we come back to that one position later?
Mr. Bird, I'm sorry, Ms. Brenner, then Mr. Bird.
Well, I was going to say something similar. That's fair. I, I, you know, and I may end up supporting this person. I just feel like we told people specifically they couldn't apply after the 11th. And we told them again after the 11th that they couldn't. So I just don't think it's fair to accept two when there were other people who were also interested. And maybe they wouldn't fall in IT. So maybe it's a moot point, but I do think we should give it a couple of weeks on that particular category.
Madam, Madam Clark, what was the deadline? July 11th?
I think it was June 11th. I don't know what time it was.
Did we give a time?
10:30 AM.
It was, yep. It was 10:30, I think, yep.
So this, so this application was June 11th at 1:30 PM, so.
One and a half hours late.
Which one? Made the one.
Mr. Pritchett was one, was, was on the right day.
Oh, okay.
And off by two hours or one and a half hours. And the other one was off by six days or five days. Mr. Buchanan.
Just going back and looking at the minutes of that meeting, there is no record of any motion other than to hold until next meeting.
No.
Look on page 152 of your packet.
It may not be in the minutes, but they specifically asked us and we said that.
Oh, there's no record of it in the minutes.
But Mr. Buchanan is correct, if there wasn't a motion, it's not binding.
Well, how about fair? To me, we said it, we told people they couldn't apply.
Well, and again, I am sorry, I can't comment, I wasn't at the meeting.
Oh, well, I was here.
So further discussion on just the issue of whether we'll accept these two applications before we vote?
No, I like what he said.
No further discussion, all in, hmm?
Oh, I don't know what, I don't recall. She said, I like what he said.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to ex, to consider, to accept for consideration, not appointment, just consideration. The Bob, Mr. Bob Pritchett and Mr. Ross Black. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
I'd say aye.
Okay, so that passes four to two with Mr. Baloo absent and Mr. Donovan and Ms. Brenner opposed. So now we have all the people forward and does anybody want to suggest a way of pressiness?
I nominate all the applicants for this committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a nominate, so are you nominating them all for consideration, is that it?
Yeah, I nominate all of them for consideration.
Including the two we've just.
Pardon me?
Including.
Including the two, yes, of course, that's passed.
So we've nominated them all, okay. Does anybody have a suggestion as to how to make the process quick?
Had this all sorted out two weeks ago. I had this all sorted out two weeks ago, but we don't even have the ordinance here, so I can't remember how many from what different slots were actually...
Why don't we just go through, each of us go through it and let them...
I don't have, we need the original ordinance. It was in our packet two weeks ago, and it's not in it this one.
Yeah, I asked...
How many positions are voting, not voting, and which areas?
We, we have voting worksheets that will explain that process and, and a voting process. If you could...
But it wasn't in our packet.
But one person applying, so the first one is Internet technology. There's two applicants, Jonathan Humphrey and Bob Pritchett.
For education.
So, we, they don't have copies? Are you, you're providing copies now?
Exactly. I'm not sure, but Jill...
Oh, okay, this, this helps.
Yeah.
Mr. Sedoo, I think, you, Mr. Sedoo, I think you were gonna mention...
Remind everybody that I did work on it, and actually, I got this PDF into Word, and then I did an Excel worksheet, and I sent to the whole council, and I wrote down the categories of each person as they applied for, and, and I distributed to each of the members, but I have a copy of that, but that was, my whole point was that it was very confusing, have a lot of 31 or 33 applicants, and not knowing which category. But anyways, that's the moot point, and I just want to add one more item, that we did receive a letter from Don Goldberg, the Director of Economic Development Port of Bellingham, with their recommendation, because I have said several times that this committee has a dual role, and, and one of the important role they have is the economic development portion of their responsibilities. And I would just request that please do look at the recommendations from the Don Goldberg while you vote. Thank you.
And I'd just like to remind the council that the, the work on this committee has been done, that the principal group that will be delivering on the recommendations of this committee will be the Port of Bellingham's Economic Development Office, and I would, I personally give heavy weight to the recommendations of the port, as these are individuals that they believe fit well within their mission, and we need to be full partners with the port on this project, so if, has anybody else got a comment on that particular part of the port?
I just have a comment.
Brenner?
Yeah, I have a comment, 'cause I talked to just about everybody, and some of them fit into another slot as well as a slot that's here, and I did, I did move some of them around, so I'm totally willing to put, if you can read my writing, to put, you know, the person that I put there.
I don't know if you necessarily have to fill those sheets out, I just gave them to you for informational purposes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mr. Bird?
I move that we appoint Bob Pritchett to Internet Technologies.
Uh, I think we're just a little bit out of sequence.
I think that we just write to put the Xs in there what you want, right?
What I thought we were gonna do, and let you guys add them up.
All right, there was a nominated by box on here, so I assumed we were gonna nominate and then vote.
We nominated, Sat Paul nominated everybody.
Okay.
So, then how do we want to handle it?
So, what, Madam Clerk, what do you think is the best way? We call each of these categories, and do the roll call for each of the categories?
Points of order.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. Please, we, we don't accept points of order from the audience. Sorry, Your Honor. Madam Clerk?
It might be easier if you just go category by category.
That's gonna be harder, though.
Well, they've all been nominated, so it would just, I could just call the role, and you could tell me which one of the...
Yeah, okay.
If it didn't.
All right.
Candidates.
Ms. Brenner?
I can't speak for anybody else, but that's gonna be tough for me, 'cause I, mine are all over on these two pages, and to go find each one, it, it'd be easier for me to put the Xs, like we talk, like we said. I could go through them and just do that.
Mr. Bird?
I think there are some that, that different categories. I'd like to go category by category, but instead of a roll call, I'd like, if someone would nominate for that category and then have a vote on it, 'cause I think there's some use possibly in conversation around a couple of these individuals, but the, and that would give us a little bit of that opportunity, and we could breeze through it pretty quick.
Okay, I think, well, let's adopt the, the procedure the Clerk's most familiar with is, which is calling the roles on, right, okay. Fire away.
Okay, so for Internet technology, Barry Buchanan.
Bob Pritchett.
Barbara Brenner.
John Jogby.
I don't think that person is in the Internet technology.
I put them there. I called these people, and, and they said they would fit in these other categories.
Sat Paul Sedoo.
Bob Pritchett.
Todd Donovan.
Pritchett.
Tyler Bird.
Pritchett.
Red Brown.
Pritchett. Uh, passes five, sorry, five to one with Ms. Brenner voting for Jogby and Mr. Ballou, excused. Next item up is manufacturing.
Barry Buchanan.
Jogby.
But if I just may use a pointed procedure, it's one each for these categories, correct?
Oh, okay.
So far, the last one has two.
Fine, sorry, sorry to interrupt. So, if you can start again, Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk.
Barbara Brenner.
Ryan Alsop.
Sat Paul Sedoo.
Mr. Jogby.
Todd Donovan.
Alsop.
Tyler Bird.
Before I do, I'm sorry, I'll go back to where I was a second ago, 'cause we didn't get a chance to say anything about these individuals, so before I vote, I'd like to say that I believe Alpha Technology's primary focus is engineering. Is that correct? Do you know, Councilmember Sedoo?
Engineering and manufacturing. I mean, they do manufacture UPSs, you know, uninterruptible power supplies for clients all over the world.
Okay. My understanding of Alsop is that that's all they do is manufacturing?
Uh, in my day it was, they made ski by days.
Actually, I would argue that, I mean, I know both of these gentlemen, and I certainly know Ryan Alsop well, and the family's great, most of their manufacturing is actually done offshore, so, whereas most of Alpha's technologies, manufacturing is done locally, or at least done onshore, as far as I know.
That's a good point, all right.
So, we're interrupted the process, so we're, if you'd pick up, we had left off.
Tyler Bird.
Jogby.
Red Brown.
Jogby. I don't have, I only have five votes listed. What do you have?
Uh, five also, with one for Alsop.
Two.
Two for Alsop, and then who do you have for Jogby? Buchanan, was it, Mr. Buchanan, was yours Jogby?
That's what I have. Barry, who did you vote for?
For...
For manufacturing.
Yeah, Jogby.
Okay, so it's three, two, so that's Jogby. Next one up, did you have a question, Ms. Brenner?
Um, yeah, but I forgot what it was.
Next up is retail. I'll start at...
Retail, okay, got it.
Oh, sorry, food processing.
Oh.
One applicant, Richard Griffith.
Who?
Richard Griffith.
Yeah, am I supposed to?
No, I haven't called your, I just thought somebody could just, we could do that one by acclamation, since there's only one applicant. Somebody would like to move that?
I, I move.
We move as a second? Do we have a second for acclamation?
Sure.
I don't.
Okay. So, all in favor of Richard Griffith for food processing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
That passes five to one, with Mr. Sedoo opposed and Mr. Ballou absent. Ms. Brenner?
I really liked what we were doing, instead of doing it this way, on us voting on one person, maybe somebody had talked to somebody else who was food, could be food processing. Even though I, I got what I wanted, I don't like the way we're doing it.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Sedoo?
I think that this is not really vetted, I know we went by the people's application and categories, and if you look at, people had one or two categories, and they can easily fit into those two categories, and, and I think this is, to me, we should have a better process for this. I know we waited that long, a month, and we are coming to it, and I, I'm not really with the process right now, the way it is.
Brenner?
Well, that's why I think if we just, you just name the category, and we go through and say who we want, rather than doing this, oh, there's only one guy here, so vote for him by acclamation. I, I like that.
Yeah, can I?
Fine with me.
Can I, like...
Sedoo?
Andrew Gamble, it's written as marine trades. Actually, Andrew Gamble, to me, is more like energy, you know? So, I mean, there are things which are really all over, and, and there are more examples than that, even, and Andrew's name does appear on the energy as well, and, and same thing like Pete Dawson. Pete Dawson is not only commercial real estate, he's also, actually, his bigger thing is a construction.
We didn't have a category of construction. Left that out.
I think we did.
We don't have that. I wish we did, but we don't.
Do you want, does the, does the council wish to reconsider the application?
I just have, sorry.
Does the council wish to reconsider the appointment of Richard Griffith and open it up to other alternatives?
Let's just do it the way we're doing it.
Mr. Sedoo?
I have one suggestion, that I would like to bring back the letter from Don Goldberg, and they went through and wrote candidates, which they not only just got the application, they really vetted and discussed, and these people, each one of them, I, I don't have enough time to talk about each one of them, but they are the people who've been in the community for 20, 30, 40 years, and they have reached a pinnacle in their own industry, and they have expressed that they would like to join this committee, provided their main task is economic development. And I say that because I personally did talk to several people, and all of them, and I think we should give some consideration and, and, and work from this list of, of the candidates which, which they have recommended. That's my suggestion.
But I actually agree with you, and I'll agree with you for another reason, too, is that the sectors for which they have described their applications don't align with what we've got on the schedule here. For example, Doug Thomas is a very good, he's probably the most qualified applicant related to food processing, and he's not listed as an option on food processing.
He's actually written as marine trades and food processing, they are bigger businesses, food processing.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Brenner, sorry, Madam Clerk?
The categories were chosen by the applicant. We didn't pick those categories, and if they didn't mark it on their application, Nadine called them and asked them which category. Some of them did list two categories, but we did not put them in categories, they were, that came from the applicant.
Yes.
So, in the case of Doug Thomas, he was listed as food processing or marine, marine trade, and there's no question in my mind, he's far more qualified for food processing than Richard Griffith, so, but he wasn't listed as an option. Do we want to start over?
reboot this process.
You want to re, hm?
Let's reboot this process.
Yeah.
So, is there, is that a motion to restart the whole process?
He said two weeks from now.
Is that a motion to restart the whole process?
I don't know. I, I'm trying to figure out what everybody's asking for.
Yeah, I...
I, I don't feel comfortable even going forward now.
Okay, so we need a motion of some, to do something? Do we?
Just express my opinion.
Okay.
An idea.
Ms. Brenner?
Um, I think do, first of all, what I don't want to see is us bragging for one over another. I don't want to put people in, that took the time to do this, in that kind of position. It's very, I, I feel that's kind of, that's kind of demeaning. They're all very qualified. I think what we were doing initially was, they would name the, staff would name the category, and we would pick, we would say our pick, and they would put it down, and they'd go through all of us, just like they were doing. All of a sudden, we came to one person who was the only one listed here on a certain, under a certain title, and changed the whole way we were doing it. I just think, just to keep going through the, you know, like we, like we started. But I have a real, I've got a real problem with, you know, saying, oh, this person is way more qualified than this other person. I just, I, I don't, we don't do that usually with, with people who apply for committees.
And actually, I want to formally apologize to Mr. Richard Griffith, 'cause I confused him with somebody else.
Oh, see, and I can...
And my comment was out of line.
So, could we go back the way we were doing it?
Mr. Bird?
I, I'm okay with going back to the way we were doing it. I, I'd like to have a little conversation before the category, if people are interested for that category, because the, I worked on this project several years ago to help define what these categories were with the port, and it wasn't the port, it was the port, it was the city and the county, and it was 15 executive directors from 15 different economic development groups here in the community, that said, these are the categories of industries that we have here, that we have the best resources for. And so, when it comes to these, I don't necessarily, I don't see it as us comparing resumes, per se, so much as it is finding the person that best represents that category, as it was the intention of that group of 18 people at that time. And so, that's, that's what I'm interested in doing, is making sure that we're as close to that category as possible.
Mr. Sedoo, then Mr. Donovan, then Ms. Brenner?
I just want to say that if there are three people in the same category, and we all agree the right category, then aren't we comparing their resumes after that? Like, when, when we say we're not comparing resumes, it's not a totally true statement. We are comparing resumes. You know, like...
Yeah, fair, that's fair.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, and...
I do it all the time. You guys just seem to do it.
Mr. Donovan, then Ms. Brenner?
I'm trying to, so, I was confused by what Mr. Bird said about this a couple years ago. I mean, I, I thought this process came out of something that Mr. Sedoo had brought to us, and then we kind of tweaked what some of those categories would be. We put out calls for applicants, and all I got to go on is what they said their area was. So, if we can start moving people around into different areas, I think I would use another couple of weeks to, to figure that out.
I think that...
I'm not, I'm not going to, um, so I, when we, you talk about rebooting, you talk about going back to how we're doing it, by, by going back to how we're doing it, you mean we just go, we have these lists, these are their interests that they declared, we stick with that, that's it? Is that what we're talking about?
No, that, that's not what we were doing, 'cause I put in some...
Ms. Brenner, please wait to be recognized.
Yeah.
That was my question, so.
Yeah, the, no, what we were doing was, she would say the category, and we would each say the person, whether it was somebody who applied for that category or another category. I did take the time to talk to so many of these people, and that's why I feel like, you know, there's room to move people around if we want to, and if they fit, and you said two years ago you met with all of them and all that, didn't anybody come up with a category of construction?
No.
Oh, wow.
The, may I? Yeah, okay. We were trying to, there's, there's a lot of information that was coming out about, if you really want to create economic development, you should focus within a specific number of categories, and at that time, Wacom was everything, and so, there was, everyone got together and sat down and defined, here's the, the seven categories, I believe, seven or eight categories. seven categories, I believe, seven or eight categories, that we want to focus on. And then, those are the list from the port that this committee started out as. And then, at that last committee meeting, I suggested that it was missing energy and missing agriculture, and should have been added to that. So, that's what we added two to that list of, of those individuals that were made. But that original list is the list that was designed, that we wanted to focus economic development on in our community.
Well, somebody did bring up construction.
It came after that, via email.
Mr. Sidhu.
I was going to say that I can give example of Jeff Callender. He worked all his life for Phillips sixty-six. He retired, now he's on the Board of Trustees of Bellingham Technical College. So, he's, he, he serves in both, like, and he has the ability to serve on both. And same way, if we call Cherry Point, BP Cherry Point, could be energy, could be manufacturing. I mean, there, there are some shades of each other. And I think that the whole intent was not to get too bogged down with the category. It should be consideration, yes, but the, the qualifying people for the task we have at hand. I don't know, I'm confused myself right now.
Let, let, let me see if I can provide a bit of clarity. I, I, I would support moving people into different categories, particularly as I know the port has interviewed them, and is aware of their bilateral areas of expertise. Ryan Alsop, for example, is a classic, their business is predominantly recreation-based products, and we have no one who's applied for recreation, so.
But we have somebody who's, we have somebody who's got a recreational business.
Well, he has a recreational business and we have no one listed on the recreational applicants.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, that's one of the reasons I.
So, my recommendation would be to include Ryan Alsop for consideration in recreation as an example. So, do, is that the way we want to proceed, is to move forward and take the lists as we've got them, or, and add other names as we think appropriate when we do the voting, as Ms. Brenner did initially?
Yeah, I think several of us did that.
Sure, Mr. Bird.
Let's try.
Okay, all right. So, that leaves the next one up is recreation, and I would nominate Mr. Alsop.
Could we go back to the food processing one that Barbara Brenner wanted to be called in order?
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I'll propose to add Doug Thomas's name in that category.
So, we want to reconsider that vote, is that it?
Yes.
All right, so the wish of the council? Reconsider the vote for food processing?
Yep. Just to do it all the same.
All right, so then we've got two applicants, one is Richard Griffith, and the other is Doug Thomas. Would you call the roll for those?
Who is the other one, I'm sorry?
Richard Griffith and Doug Thomas.
Doug Thomas, from the Bellingham College story.
Okay, just, oh, oh. Now I got him somewhere else.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Barry Buchanan.
Thomas.
Barbara Brenner.
Griffith.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Thomas.
Todd Donovan.
Aye.
Tyler Byrd.
Thomas.
Red Brown.
Thomas. So, that is four, Thomas, one for Griffiths, and one abstention, and one excused. Next item up is recreation, and I'm nominating Alsop for consideration, Mr. Bird.
I'm on Alsop's website right now, and I'm looking at all the products that they have. Monitor stands, laptop stands, printer stands, desktop accessories, media storage, there's not a single product on here for recreation. I'm just going to put that out there. I, I think, I was going to put them in a general category, but I don't feel comfortable with them in that category.
Okay, all right.
What?
All right, I just, comment, Mr. Bird, I think your comments are valid. I think your comments are valid, the, the company was very heavily involved in the recreation industry, maybe their market has changed. Right? Brenner, do you have a comment?
I'm very confused by what you just, what he just said.
Is there any other nominations?
I have.
I'm going to withdraw my nomination for Alsop for recreation.
For recreation, yes.
Is there any other nominations for recreation, or leave that open? Ms. Brenner.
Chris Halterman, she's got a bowling alley, or she did, last time I checked. Chris Halterman.
Okay, so, we have any other nominations?
Second for conversation. Well, I, I, okay, I'm not sure, go ahead. This process is a little different, so if I was out.
And I, I, I personally don't think a bowling alley is normal, is what the mainstream recreation industry is in the community.
I love to bowl.
Given that this industry, given this area is so focused on outdoor recreation as opposed to indoor recreation.
Didn't say outdoor, it just said recreation.
I'm just expressing my opinion, Ms. Brenner. So.
What?
Any other nominations? All right, if you call the roll for that?
I'm actually not finding Chris's name. Oh, there she is, thank you.
And abstentions or other names are valid votes as well, so.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Whose name is on there, I'm not particularly clear, Ryan.
Chris Halterman.
Chris Halterman, you can vote for, for, against her or abstain.
I abstain.
Todd Donovan.
Aye.
Tyler Byrd.
Halterman.
Red Brown.
Abstain.
Barbara Brenner.
Halterman.
Barry Buchanan.
Abstain.
Okay, so that's four abstentions and two votes, so that fails. Next item up is retail, Casey Diggs, Sarah Hutton, and Dan Robbins.
Sorry, trying to catch my place here. Barry Buchanan.
Diggs.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Diggs.
Tyler Byrd.
Just for quick, Sarah Hutton's the Village Books owner now, right? Did I get that right? I'm just, all right, Hutton.
Red Brown.
Diggs.
Barbara Brenner.
Brian Van De Yot.
Todd Donovan.
Diggs.
Sorry, I missed, who did you vote for?
Uh, Mir, Hutton.
Hutton, sorry. Okay, so that's four for Diggs, one for Hutton, and one for Van De Yot. Okay, next is marine trades, was Paul Burrell, Andrew Gamble, and Doug Thomas. And we've just voted Doug Thomas onto one position, so he's ineligible to serve at two, so we'd strike his name off. That leaves us Paul Burrell and Andrew Gamble.
I have a question.
Brenner.
Because I had Douglas Thomas for marine trades, and he's already on the other thing. Who else is marine trades?
Andrew Gamble.
Andrew Gamble.
And Paul Burrell.
Paul who?
Burrell.
Burrell.
It's on your list, it's on your list here. Brenner, if you look at this list, it's all listed.
Oh, I was looking at my list and the packet. It's hard to do both. Where's, mine's all, I've got blank pages here, what's going on?
As far as I'm aware, Paul Burrell, Burrell, is the only person in this list that's a fisherman that I saw. And I, I think fishing is a industry we should have, so I'm going to throw that out there.
So, any other discussion? Brenner.
Oh, should I give it now?
Do you have any other questions?
Paul Burrell.
No, we're not asking for your vote yet, do you have any other questions about, before we vote?
Yeah, it's very, I'm, my thing, it's difficult, do you have one page after the other, because I got.
Yes, you have the same document as ever.
But I got a bunch of blank pages. Okay, whatever. Anyway, yeah.
Ms. Brenner, are we voting?
I'm fine, I'm going with that guy, Paul Burrell.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll on, on the marine trades.
Todd Donovan.
Burrell.
Tyler Byrd. Red Brown.
Burrell.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Andrew.
Barbara Brenner.
Andrew Gamble.
Barry Buchanan.
Burrell.
That's four for Burrell, two for Gamble. Next item up is commercial real estate, with Pete Dawson, Troy Mulleyat, and John Ramsey. Yep.
Barbara Brenner.
Pete Dawson.
Barry Buchanan.
Dawson.
Todd Donovan.
Dawson.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Dawson.
Tyler Byrd.
Ramsey.
Red Brown.
Dawson. That's five for Dawson and one for Ramsey. Next item up, next item up was agriculture, appeared to be one applicant, which was Brad Rader.
By acclamation.
Does anybody else want to nominate, are there any other names, or is that it?
Let's just keep it a process.
Okay.
I'm not, no, I, I, I feel I need to do that.
Yes, that's a good thing.
Yes, I have to ask the question. If there's no other applications, or no other nominations, then we'll do it by acclamation, all in favor of Brad Rader, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes six to zero with Mr. Blue, excused. Next item up is energy industry. I would just like a couple of minutes to remind, refresh myself, because there's so many here. Who else ready, I'm behind, but, okay, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll?
Barry Buchanan.
Andrew.
Barbara Brenner.
Chris Cullen.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Andrew.
Todd Donovan.
Summers.
Andrew.
Red Brown.
Andrew. Okay, next item up is to appoint two. Remind me, these were, these were people in which category? Open category, okay, all right, so, we have to strike a couple of these off, because Pritchard has been appointed already. And, not appointed, we did appoint Zogby, we did appoint Diggs, we did appoint Burrell, we did appoint Gamble, we did appoint Thomas and Dawson. That's it, there's nothing else, I think, is that right? If I'm reading this correctly, our choices for this is Debbie Old, Carrie Buckingham, Jeff Challander, Callender, sorry, Chris Halterman, Etha Hewen, James McCarrion, Danielle Rosaline Rosaleson, pardon if I'm screwing up some of these names, James Twining, Rollo, Van Slake, Ross Black, Jonathan Humphrey, Ryan Alsop, Sarah Hutton, Dan Robbins, Troy Mulleyat, John Ramsey, Chris Cullen, Tim Johnson, Joey Murphy, Joshua Summers, and Brian Van De Yot.
I move to appoint Troy Mulleyat to one of the open positions.
I think we're just going to do the roll.
Everybody's already nominated.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, the likelihood that we're all going to hit the same people.
It's going to be quicker, this, Madam Clerk, if you want to call the roll?
Oh, two.
Two.
Barry Buchanan.
Callender and Mulleyat.
Barbara Brenner.
Cullen and Tim Johnson.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Jeff and Troy. Yeah, oh, Jeff Callender and Troy Mulleyat.
Todd Donovan.
Buckingham and Robbins.
Tyler Byrd.
I'm going to go off script again. The Callender is the only person we have on here for BTC, is related to BTC, and we have a position for them.
Cullen is BP.
Cullen's BTC.
Oh, BTC.
BTC, yeah.
Well, this is, aren't we, aren't we doing other?
That's my point.
That's his point.
That's my point. I'd rather put Col, or him in BTC, because there's no other position for that. So, I'm going to put that out there, Mulleyat and Alsop.
Your votes are for Mulleyat and Alsop? Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Alsop and Mulleyat.
Thank you.
I was going to go for Alsop.
Red Brown.
Call, Callender and Mulleyat.
Mulleyat.
I, so I have three for Callender and three for Mulleyat.
That's what I have also.
And we're going to need four, we're going to need four, aren't we? Okay, all right, let's start again.
The two highest are, are some, how do we do that?
Can I move to, would you be amicable with moving to putting Callender into the BTC position?
There is no BTC position.
I, I just mean, if, if we do that now, then it removes him from the list.
No, I, I, I mean, I can, but, you mean, move that name into higher education? I mean, that's what I've been saying for the other positions too, the people who did qualify for more than one. I mean, you know, we have gone through this route now to, to leave it like this, and we are following, so. Yeah, I, I like Jeff, I, I will vote for him, whichever category he's in.
It just removes him from this list, it brings it.
Okay, well, that's a motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
Oh, I second that.
Okay, so all in favor of that motion, any discussion, sorry, Ms. Brenner? Any discussion, Ms. Brenner, I'm recognizing.
Yeah, I think we should skip this and come back to it, and then we could do our others, and then if it doesn't work on others, we come back to it.
Only one more.
Well, then, after we do that, one more, the education.
He wants to move somebody to education.
Yes.
Oh, well, either way.
That's the motion on the floor.
And there was one spot for each of the educational, each educational place had one spot.
Two for higher education.
Two for education.
Just two.
So, are we doing educational?
The mo, the motion on the floor is for, to move Mr. Callender from the, from the general category into the education category.
Okay.
Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Donovan.
I will speak against the motion, because I get, we seem to have this shifting process here, when we don't get what we want, or something. So, do we go back to the start and do this, or do we, in the middle of it, change, now we're going to move people around? So, I really, I, I'm kind of losing the plot here. I speak against the motion. I speak against the motion.
Okay, I speak for the motion, because this is sort of the bucket for other, and I actually think this should have been presented last, and it would have achieved the same thing. So, I speak for your motion. Any further discussion?
On what?
The motion is to move Mr. Calendar into the higher ed category for consideration. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
That passes six to two with-
Four to two.
Four to two, with Mr. Donovan and Mr. Buchanan opposed. I'd like to make another motion that we consider higher education first.
Second.
That's seconded by Mr. Byrd. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing-
Wait, would you say the motion, please?
The motion is to consider higher education category next.
Okay, yeah, I thought we already voted on that.
I second that.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Baloo excused. So, then, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for higher education.
Todd Donovan. Tyler Byrd.
Calendar and Cole.
Red Brown.
Calendar and Cole.
Sat Paul Sedu.
Brad Johnson and Jeff.
Calendar.
Jeff Calendar.
Barbara Brenner.
Calendar and Cole.
Barry Buchanan.
Calendar and Cole.
All right, Mr. Sedu, could you tell me what you said? Would you repeat your vote? I missed it.
Oh, I said Brad Johnson and Jeff Calendar.
All right, so, it looks like Calendar gets five votes, and Susan Cole gets four votes, so that passes. Okay, now we come back to the previous category, and we scratched Mr. Calendar off the list, because he's now appointed to something else. And we failed to secure two people for this, so we'll maybe just restart the whole vote again. Madam Clerk.
Why do you cross this?
Ms. Brenner.
Could you tell me who's already been appointed? I'm losing track.
Mr. Cal, I will tell you.
Okay. Okay. Okay, can I keep this? Thanks.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Barry Buchanan.
Alsop and Mulleat.
Barbara Brenner.
Cullen and Johnson.
Sat Paul Sedu.
Alsop and Mulleat.
Todd Donovan. Tyler Byrd.
I was thinking about changing my vote, just to keep it lively up here, but Alsop and Mulleat.
I'm sorry, who was your second choice?
Me, is that?
Mulleat.
Red Brown.
Alsop and Mulleat. I think it's four votes for Mulleat and four votes for Alsop, and I think that is the end, isn't it? No, no, sorry. Now, we have to decide which of these are going to be appointed for two years, and which of these are going to be appointed for four years.
Roll the dice.
What was that?
Just said roll the dice.
Yeah, really.
Put it in a hat.
Well, what we have done in the past, which I thought was good, was those who got the most votes were the ones where you appointed for the full term, and those who got the second votes.
Yeah, that's just-
All right. So, with that in mind, that would be, um, Pritchard got five votes, so I would put him down for a five-year term. Some of them were high.
Calendar got-
Pete Dawson got five votes.
Jeffrey Calendar got five votes.
Calendar got five votes. That's six. And then that leaves us to have to choose the rest of them, because the rest of them all got four votes. Mr. Byrd, and then Ms. Brenner.
In the six months I've been up here, I feel like we've gone through the same thing several times. I almost feel like it's getting worse. The, whatever we decide, can we set that as a process, maybe up here in the front with the rules of order, for how we appoint these positions moving forward, so it's the same, and we're not all confused and trying to figure it out?
I would certainly welcome a proposal from you for us to vote on later on, but I don't want it to be in the middle of this process.
I'd say alphabetically-
Well, we've always done, my recollection is we've always done it, where we give it to staff and say, do it that way. Not that I don't trust your numbers, but I would rather have it to be the staff does it, then we get-
Well, it's on our agenda for vote. Mr. Sedu.
I'll put my two cents. I think the system we used to appoint the county council person was the best.
Let's not get off topic, let's not get off topic. So, based on prior things, we have, we have got three, we have got three suggestions for, of the six, for the four-year terms, which is Pritchard, Dawson, and Calendar. I would request nominations for the other three, and then the rest would fall into the two-year terms.
I would nominate the first three people in the alphabet, last name.
Do I have a second for that? Motion and a second, all in favors, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passes.
Abstain, that seems prejudicial.
That passes five, five to zero with Ms. Brenner abstaining, sorry, five to abstain, one abstention, Ms. Brenner abstaining, abstaining, and Mr. Baloo, um, uh-
Lucky.
Lucky. Okay, will staff be able to work out which of those three it needs to be? Okay.
This is probably not a good way.
All right, next item up.
Oh, I had one more thing to this, if I may.
Mr. Sedu.
I think that one of the criteria, or the clause in this appointment is that we have to have a county council person appointed to that, and I offered myself to-
I don't accept Paul Sedu.
No, we didn't say that.
And, and I think that we shouldn't forget that, since we are in the process, let's just complete it.
Ms. Brenner.
I don't remember us saying that we were appointing a county council person.
Oh, it is in the-
We did?
It is in the-
All right, you're it.
Ordinance.
I nominate Sat Paul Sedu.
And I seconded it as fast as I could. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously, with the exception of Mr. Baloo, who's excused. All right, um, next item up is executive appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Request confirmation of the county executive, county executive's appointment of Dana Weber to the Watkin County Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Is there a motion to approve?
Confirm.
Mr. Donovan moves to confirm.
Second.
Mr. Buchanan seconds, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes six to zero with Mr. Baloo excused. Next item up is introduction items. I have a motion to introduce with-
Move to introduce.
Mr. Buchanan moves to introduce, and we have one amended item, which is-
Hello.
Hello, which is this one, okay? Ms. Brenner.
I, he's not here, but I would like to thank Mark Personias for getting that to us with the amendment so quick.
Any further discussion about introducing these items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes six to zero with Mr. Baloo excused. Next item up is special committee of the whole reports, Mr. Donovan, oh, sorry, that was mine. So, we discussed further amendments to the Cherry Point and Comprehensive Plan amendments. We got about halfway through the document, and we'll be continuing the process in the future. And then we had a discussion about temporary homeless facilities, and I'm just drawing a blank on what the conclusion was.
We just voted it in.
Yeah, that's right, sorry, you're right. Finance and Administrative Services, anything else?
Yes, we had a report from county executive, we talked about the, this building, County Courthouse repairs project, which is proceeding, and of course, they are selecting the contractor for that. I think the other big discussion we had was about the recent raspberry price crash, or there has been a serious issue with the local berry producing, and Watkin County is the highest raspberry-producing county in whole United States, and, and there have been a real issue that one week before the crop was to be harvested, several buyers, large buyers, international buyers, as well as national buyers, declared that they are not going to purchase any berries. And still, there are 9,000 acres of raspberries in our county, and, and it seems like only one-third will be bought or sold. It's a, so we, I invited Brad Rader and John Mayberry, two families who've been doing raspberries for several decades, as well as Henry Beerling, to come, and he is the executive director of the Red Raspberry Commission, I believe. And they came, and we had a good, robust discussion about how county can help, and, and how we can work on some long-term measures to minimize these things. These are not easy things, and, and it will be continuing, and council, as well as the administration, has expressed that we will provide these support ladders to USDA, to Secretary of Agriculture, to the Washington State, wherever is possible, so they will take the lead, what have helped, they need from the county council. And, and they are going to propose some other measures where county can help the farmers in whatever way. So, this is an ongoing thing, and we will see in next few weeks how we can at least reduce a little bit of this pain. It's, it's very, very hard, especially on the small growers. So, other than that, just regular meeting.
Next item up was, ex-council of the whole, was a report from juvenile court. We had a very, I think, very encouraging report in terms of the good work they've been doing, and particularly at how few juveniles are actually incarcerated.
Mr. Chair, that was not committee of the whole.
It was Citizens Committee of the Whole.
Were there other committees before that one?
That's, sorry, that's what's on my script.
That was Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
And Public Works.
I stand corrected, but I'm just reading off the script. Then please proceed, please proceed, Mr. Buchanan.
As, as the chair was stating, we had a report today from juvenile court. It's very encouraging to see the progress they've made over the years in reducing their numbers. It's, it was just, it was just very encouraging. I also wanted to report out on a conference I went to in San Francisco two weeks ago, along with two Bellingham City Council folks, and Bruce Van Glup from the District Court. Just, just going to be brief, because I'm going to, I plan on doing a report to the committee in two weeks, but it was a, it was a conference called Policy Academy. It was funded by the MacArthur Foundation grant that Nandeehan had got, and it was all about incarceration prevention for young adults, 18 to 25, and there was a lot of great information, and I look forward to presenting that to you in two weeks.
Thank you. Next item up was Public Works.
Okay, since we're all out of order here, anyway. We had, in addition to the very wonderful presentation by Safe Storage Now, and I'm glad we got the rest of the questions answered, we had excellent presentations by Watkin Conservation District on the Firewise program, and Tyler, since you're still here, I sure hope we see a budget request come through for, to be able to make that program more effective. And the other one was presentation on Watkin County Syringe Service Program, and I believe that's already in the works to be presented at budget time for some funds for that. But these were really informative presentations today.
Item was Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee, which I guess is the report you just gave now, right? Okay. And then the Special Committee of the Whole was a presentation from the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. They're a 2018 annual report, which I thought was pretty encouraging, and I certainly appreciate the dedication and the hard work that they're doing. And the second thing we addressed was a discussion about meeting procedures, which was held for future debate. I think, Madam Clerk, you said there was two items you wanted to bring up?
I sent an email to council members today, asking if there was interest in having a meeting next week from maybe 10:00 to noon, to hopefully finish up the Cherry Point amendments. I got one response. One council member said that they would be agreeable to that, but I wanted to check and see if that's possible.
You had two responses, I said no.
Oh, okay.
I can't make it.
I'm a no.
Okay, and your second item was, was it two items you said?
There is, but I won't, that was by council member.
Um, I would rather the people who were going to work on that, get that, get what they need to have, and then bring it back to us. I don't want to, I don't want to feel like we're just dragging this along again, so I would rather do that. Who were the two? Was Barry, and was there somebody else?
Jane Barry.
And Todd. Yeah, I would rather those two get the information and get it to us, and then schedule it right after that.
Okay.
Mr. Buchanan.
Yeah, we would not have time to get anything for a pack, it would be due like today or tomorrow, I mean, for next week, so I would like to wait.
Sounds like that's a no.
Okay.
I have a, I have a suggestion.
Sedu.
Can we move it from a Tuesday to another day? Like, it doesn't have to be Tuesday.
I would rather it be a Tuesday.
That doesn't work.
Okay.
And my other, I had a purple sheet on your chairs today to talk about council member wish lists for 2019 and '20 budget, and I needed to find out from you which ones of these, or all of these, or none of these, that council supports, before we do the paperwork on them.
Sorry, Ms. Brenner, and Mr. Sedu.
I would like to add the Firewise, funding for Firewise, and we've, the other thing's already coming to us in a budget thing, so I would like to, for budget, add Firewise. And I'm not opposed to the one, the senior thing for the Sikh community, I'm just wondering, why don't we do it for all the senior communities? Why?
I want to speak to that before you say anything. Is my turn?
Sedu.
Okay. I think I sent an email, because I was actually in Canada, and I saw Dana's email, is the deadline for submitting your request, so I was on my iPhone, and I sent it. I didn't really think it through. The proposal I have is not only for Sikh community.
Okay.
It is, actually, it is the middle part of the county, and, you know, if you, we talked about the Weiser Lake Lanyard, and there's a lot of population, of course, there is, that the Sikh temple is willing to be the lead organization to, to do that, and, and provide the service, but this center, senior services will be open to anybody and everybody. It's not limited to them alone. And as a matter of fact, last week, we had a discussion with some people from London, and they want to learn Punjabi, and we have people who want to learn English. So, we said that twice a week, we will have a meeting where people who are interested to learn Punjabi, and we will get the people who want to learn English, and get them together in a room, and have a facilitator, and start talking. them together in a room and have a facilitator and start talking. And I think that, you know, that was the thing, that there are a lot of people interested because they interact with each other all the time. And this is a difficulty both sides have. And I thought of that this could be another place where senior citizen can start interacting and relating and understanding with each other if we have that kind of service. And there are a lot of folks in the farming community which do not have that service, which we intend to provide a transportation that the temple wants to buy one or maybe two 12-passenger vans and with little help from the County on the operational side, not capital side, to provide this transportation where they can pick up people from home and bring it to the senior center two or three times a week and then take them away. And the temple will offer the lunch for free, not from this money. So, there are a lot of thoughts. I am going to meet with the County Executive, but at the same time, I'm going to write down a proposal.
Okay.
So, I would ask the council to support that request. And of course, there will be more details to be shared with everybody before we decide on that.
Ms. Brenner.
I'm not sure I support it or not. What I was thinking of was senior services is making sure seniors get food and transportation to medical services, like kinda critical things. I think it's a great idea what you're talking about. So, I'm not sure you want that $20,000 for that or... Yeah, put it together.
For... I'll put it together, the whole services, and I will invite actually more suggestions from people how it can... Because this is the first time it's getting done. And I think if we do it for one biennium, and that would be a pilot program if it is successful, and then we can work from there.
And, sorry, Mr. Bed.
I'd just like the clarification on the $80,000 for Criminal Justice. I know that we had, if I recall correctly, a $100,000 request last time, but I also don't recall ever seeing any budget requests coming through or either the committee or the council approving any of that money being spent. So...
That's just a reappropriation of what would be left from the $100,000.
So, where's... What happened to the $20,000?
We spent it throughout the process of our facilitator and our video and our interpreters and so on. And...
Well, how's that get decided? Wouldn't that come to our committee to vote on? I don't ever remember voting on any of those budget requests.
If I remember correctly, at the beginning of the process, for the listening sessions, it was allowed for the committee to vote on the posters, the meeting sites. So, the committee has voted on all of the items that we've paid, except for the interpreters, which was a last-minute item.
The committee being Barry, myself.
Correct.
Yeah.
There was a budget request or our committee for that?
I believe so.
At the beginning of the year, $100,000 was put into an account for the Criminal Justice Committee to use.
I remember that. I just don't actually remember seeing any of the requests coming through for spending that money. So, I don't remember that coming to the committee, either this committee or the Finance Committee or the council as a whole, as far as individual requests for how that money was being spent.
It didn't... We didn't work it that way. So, we... So, the committee approved the posters. So, we had the posters made. We paid for the posters. Any room rental for the rooms, we paid for that. I can't remember what else. The facilitator, we paid for her. That was a... It wasn't the actual funds. We didn't come to you and say, "We need $2,300." Barry was allowed to sign those invoices for anything that we've paid for so far. And then the interpreter services for the last meeting, that was our most recent bill. Is that not... Am I not answering your question?
Yeah, we... And, you know, that was part of the work plan. We had a process that took steps to get there, too.
Correct.
Yeah.
I guess my problem with that would be that as a committee member, I thought we should have been included in that and knowing what those individual budget requests are. Honestly, I really feel very uncomfortable with that. Yeah, I knew we were approving the $100,000 so that we could use it at some time. I knew that we were approving the design for the poster. I know that we approved for the Listening Tour locations. But we weren't consulted at any point on who our individual is gonna be that was gonna facilitate those or what the costs were on those. I know that the survey I came back with specifically is a cost, but we didn't see any of those other costs. And so, as committee members, I kinda feel like that's a pretty important thing that we're seeing.
I believe that we all have to look at the past minutes, but I... We followed whatever process was set up at the very beginning. So, I can get that information for you, just so you have it. And if there's a different process that the committee wants us to follow in the future?
We would, for sure, yeah. If you'd like to see it done differently, no problem.
Yeah, I would say that any of those requests would come to whatever the committee is that has the budget and that we would approve those. Does that make sense to the rest of the council?
Yeah, it does make sense. I think that since it came about so quickly and new committee and everything, and I was sure that we have allocated $100,000 and I knew that this is not going... We're going to spend all $100,000 on the Listening Tour only, right? But I think that is a good suggestion that we should itemize some lists and some budgets of that so that there is a more transparency and everybody else knows. It's not only the three committee members. The whole council should know.
As a new council member, then, just for clarity, is this the only committee that has a budget that is signed to it?
No.
So, is that then... Because I don't... I don't know. I haven't seen that happen. So, I'm just... I'm curious where that process goes.
It's, as I understand, some need basis. Like, when we did the study on the Rod Brown legal help, that... So, we got an allocation for that. And so, it's not a standing budget for any committee. It's on need basis when the committee requests that we are going to undertake something. And then we ask for money from the administration and we appropriate that money and then we use it. But there is no standing budgets for any committee. That's my understanding.
Donovan.
I might misunderstand this. But there are a couple of things where we have, like, that budget was established where the Chair of the committee can authorize some spending under a certain amount. I think we have the same thing with the Incarceration Reduction Prevention Task Force.
That's correct.
Yeah. That there's... So, I mean, it is a good point. Do we want the Chair of those committees just be able to sign off if it's under, what, five or something?
That's the amount for the task force. I'm not sure what was done for the Criminal Justice Committee.
We just followed the purchasing policy, I think.
Yeah.
No, the task force created itself.
No, it's not the task force. I'm talking about our committee. We follow just the county purchasing policy.
Okay.
Yeah. But if you get... I mean, we should bring that up in committee and get it.
Yeah.
There was something set up when we set up the committee to set up that authorization process.
I can get you the information, how we've processed the bills and also get you a detailed list of what the money has been spent on.
Yeah. I guess I just wanna make sure that as a committee, if I'm sitting on a committee and that committee is spending money, that we have the ability as a committee member to know what that's being spent on and the reasons why and the process that we chose for those items. And that it's public. I guess that's my big concern. So, okay, thanks.
Totally agree.
Yep.
Step in as Vice Chair here, I guess. Oh, Mr. Brown will be up there. So, we're...
Would you say meetings adjourned?
No, we're done with the committee reports.
I actually need a vote on each of these items to see what I'm gonna include with the budget. So, for Firewise, Barbara, did you have an idea of how much money you wanted to allocate for that program?
We were gonna get that amount. I don't know.
I think the man we had before was $50,000.
I think it was $50,000.
Was it $50,000?
$50,000.
Okay, $50,000. But he was gonna give us way more specifics, so...
Yeah, but...
It's just a great program.
Are you talking about George Boggs?
Yeah. He was the one who made the presentation and he will be bringing us some real specifics on it.
The reason I'm in a kind of a rush on this is because we have to have our budget in before the end of this month. And it's a lot of work, so I...
Yeah, do that, yeah. I'll make it fall into that.
So, it's a motion for $50,000 for Firewise, is that right?
Yeah.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Buchanan. Ms. Brenner makes a motion. Mr. Buchanan seconds. All in favor... Oh, sorry, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
That's five, four, Mr. Bird opposed and Mr. Ballou absent. Next item up is, Ms. Brenner, you're moving the video screen from behind the council members. Deus, over to the old screen where it was located by the flags. I would second that motion, if you're making that motion. So, Brenner makes a motion. I second it. Any discussion?
I wanna clarify. You wanna move this and not get a third screen for over here?
Yeah, I'll tell you what. It's really hard getting around that thing. I don't know, but every time it's down, I either bang my head or bump into somebody. And it just isn't working well unless they could do it differently or something.
To your question, I think it probably makes sense. It might make sense to buy a new one.
Okay.
And leave this one here because of the cost.
I think this one is really convenient for the audience members, having it.
Well, they... All they have to do is go like that or that, just like us. This is...
Audience has spoken.
There's a problem with it.
What'd they say?
They said no. They want it here.
The other thing is, it actually...
I get a concussion. I didn't... I'll say I warned you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So, the motion is to buy a new one and we can discuss it later on.
Discussion? The... I think the point of Ms. Brenner's motion was that she didn't want this one here more than she wanted one there. So...
Yeah, well, I would want one there anyway because from where we sit at this side, it's easier than going like that. But this is fine if they could do something about having it higher and smaller so we don't bang into it all the time. There's no room behind us.
With the table forward.
Yeah, let's do that. I don't care. Do something where I'm not always bumping into it and everybody... I'm not the only one, even though no one else will admit it.
So, let's stick back to the process. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Sado.
I think I like Andrew's idea that there's a curved
Oh.
screen available. And...
Does that exist?
Just look into that if there's a curved screen. But this is actually for the audience, not for us.
Well, I know, but I don't need to bang my head just for...
I don't... I haven't found any problem going around it. You may have.
You must be better at...
Yeah, so I...
Maneuvering it.
And this is not up all the time anyways. It's very little time it's up, but it's very convenient for people sitting in here, watching directly.
If they can go like that.
So, I would say that if we wanna buy, buy another one rather than taking this off.
All right. So, wait. Any further discussion?
That may be a good point.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan.
How much is it?
We have to...
I have no idea. There will be a cost for all the electrical. We'll have to probably buy another projector.
Probably another $800,000, right?
Not worth that.
Work with facilities on that.
Yeah.
As a placeholder, what, $30,000 would be fine, probably? What did we pay for the other one?
Forty.
Forty, okay.
Just to be safe.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, as a placeholder, what, $40,000? Any further discussion on this item?
I forgot one. I'm sorry. The... That's just a total waste of $30,000. Ms. Brenner, I love you. I think you're awesome. But it'd be way easier if you just sat here next to me.
No, the last one.
And you'd avoid that and you could see that screen and it would save taxpayers 30 grand.
I'll just come in the other door. Forget it.
I know this seating thing is a super touchy subject, but...
Well, I'm not moving. Been here in this seat for 20 something years.
I gotta vote no on this one.
All right.
No, I'll come in the other door.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
That's how many noes?
Oh. What?
We are voting on all of these. Sorry. Sorry.
Asking who said no. One, two...
No, no, no. I didn't say no. I didn't say no. I just have... Are we voting on all of these items or just one?
Individually, we're voting on the individual.
Oh, okay. Then I'm no. Then I'm no.
Okay. So, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
That fails. Four to two with Brenner and Brown.
Oh, you voted for it.
They voted for it.
Oh, my gosh. We agree on something.
It's the beginning.
Firewise stuff, what are you gonna blame that? All right. Next item up is Barry Buchanan's Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee, reallocation of the existing budget of $80,000. Do I have a motion for that?
I so will.
Mr. Buchanan moves. Do I have a... Ms. Brenner seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
That passes five to one with Mr. Bird opposed. Next item up is Mr. Sado's Senior Citizen Services for Sikh Community of $20,000. Do I have a motion to approve?
I... Sorry. I second that, but I need to discuss this.
No, you have to make the motion. I don't have a motion. Are you making the motion?
I make this motion.
Okay. So, then who's seconding it?
Second.
Mr. Bird seconds it. Ms. Brenner, what?
Could you just say senior services?
Yes, that's what I was gonna say. This should be Senior Citizen Services, period, $20,000, not Sikh community.
North County.
North County, north and middle county. That's what... So, my motion is to call this item as a Senior Citizen Services for the mid-north county area.
Mr. Bed.
Will we get a chance to see the information about that?
Of course, of course.
Before it goes to another vote somehow? I mean, the process would...
What would probably happen, depending on how long it takes for me to get his information, would be that I would have to prepare the ASR. It'll have to be prepared before the next meeting. So, I'll have to prepare it for inclusion with our budget submission. Get it done by the 24th, I could get it to you. If it's not done by the 24th, it will come back to you in the budget if it's approved by the executive.
Yeah.
You'll still see it as part of the budget, even if it's not approved, because you do get to see all the ASRs.
Yeah. It is... It's not approval. It's just being on the list. We still have to vote finally with all the information provided to everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes six to zero. I would like to put forward two items. One is $20,000 for the locker program we talked about today, assist in the homeless lockers. They were asking for money in the next budget. I would like to put forward $20,000 for that. Do I have someone who seconds it?
Second.
Mr. Donovan seconds it?
Yeah, that's good. How many lockers is that?
I don't know, but I just think it's a reasonable starting amount. Twenty thousand dollars for the lockers, I think. Sounds like a modest amount for a pilot program. My bet, if I remember correctly, it'll probably do 20-plus lockers. So, I might be off.
I second that.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Seeing, Mr. Bed.
The... If we went through the trial and that came back at some point and we had data and results that we could use for that, I'm all for leveraging our property at no cost to us. The huge supporters of Homes Now because of their approach to this and the... But I'm not for giving money for that portion of it. If the community wants to do a trial and showcase that it works and then comes back and say, "Hey, these are the results and now we could scale those and have better results," that sounds great. But I think the community should start it. So, no.
So, just to make sure you understand the process, this money wouldn't be available for a lease until January, correct? So, if we voted on this, it gets into the budget. It doesn't actually get spent until January.
That's correct.
Right. So, we... This is our, really our one shot to put under the rules. There really are... We're in that... We're in a window where we have the authority to put, insert things into the budget. So, if you wait until after it's proven, you'll probably have to wait a full year before we could actually... We could put money in the budget. Now, the executive can put money in the budget if they agree. This is the opportunity that we have to put money in the budget. So...
Just one clarification. This is our chance to include it with our budget submission, but when the council is going over the budget, review... but when the council is going over the budget, reviewing the budget in October, November, whenever it gets approved, you will have another chance at that time, just to clarify that, so there are some times at the end of the year when the council members do add other additional items, however, it's nice if we can get it in when we actually submit our budget, so the executive knows what we're asking for.
And this is budget approval, it's not spendatory approval, so we put it in the budget to allocate it, it then would come back to, or the amount might be too small to come back to us to do the final approval, would it or not?
Well, we would put it forward as an ASR and then the county executive decides which ASRs are approved with the budget and which are not.
Right, but if the amount is in the threshold for the budget, budget, sorry, for the executive's authority, who has the final decision on spending the money, the executive or the council? If the council's budget item has been approved?
I'm not following you, Tyler's going to help me, though.
You know what I'm saying?
Tyler Schroeder, deputy executive, departments can spend up to ten thousand dollars, so if the amount was greater than ten thousand dollars, then it has to get executive authorization. So if it's a twenty thousand dollar budget supplemental or additional service request, council office would have the ability to spend up to ten thousand dollars of that, consistent with the purchasing policies, if the amount was greater than ten thousand dollars, it would have to go to the executive for signature authority associated with it.
But if the council's approved it, does the, let's say the council approves an amount that doesn't come back to the council normally because it's in, under that fifty thousand dollar threshold, is the executive's sole decision whether to spend the money or is the council got authority to spend the money?
The executive, because...
You understand what I'm saying?
I would say that in the last four years that I've been here and six years before that, the council office has been able to expend that amount of money, ten thousand dollars or less.
No, I'm talking about if, for example, we've got the eighty thousand dollars that Barry has talked about, who has, who controls the expenditure of that, is it the executive or the council?
Consistent with the purchasing code.
Yes, and that's what we've been following.
Yes.
So it's ten thousand per expenditure, not per budget item, so if you could have two ten thousand dollar expenditures.
To do one thing, I don't think so.
But not with the same organization.
I think so, I think that's just per contract, right?
Well, so if it's a contract for, so, is it a contract for service that we're talking about, is it a capital purchase that we're talking about, there's a number of different levels as it relates to that purchasing code that we've been talking about for the last couple of years, so ten thousand dollars can be done without a contract, can be done through a letter of agreement, those are usually accomplished by departments, we have considered the council to be that same, similar type of department in which the department can spend that, so in theory, the council can expend that. Up to forty thousand dollars, there's a contract that has to be associated with it, the executive can spend up to that forty thousand dollar limit, anything greater than that for a contract for service has to come for the council for approval, like in the finance committee recommendations.
Okay, but my question's a bit different, my question is, the council can put this in and can approve the budget, but that's approving, that's the allocation of the money for future expenditure.
So...
So, and yes, we follow the purchasing rules about what the decision tree is.
Yeah.
But is who controls whether the money is ultimately spent, if the executive theoretically says, I don't agree with that item, yes, you put it in there, yes, I approved it, but I have the signing authority, I'm not going to sign.
Correct.
Right.
The executive has that authority.
Okay, so unless it's in the council, for the council's direct expenditure, the executive controls it.
To give an example, maybe one too close to home, Cherry Point and the discussion about Cascadia Law Group, the executive has the authority to authorize those expenditures.
Or not authorize them.
Correct, without a signature.
Right, fine, and that's what I was going to, Mr. Buchanan.
One more question for you, Tyler, so, the point I was trying to make, if you had a budgeted amount of twenty thousand dollars and you had two efforts, one was a consultant that was doing surveying
Correct.
For ten thousand dollars and you were, another one for materials, that would be a separate expenditure and authorized by the department.
That's correct.
Okay.
Even if it's with the same organization?
Yes.
Okay, interesting. The twenty grand buys you ten tiny houses, I'd rather have ten tiny houses than ten lockers. Better a house for you than a house for your stuff.
All right, Ms. Brenner, we're still on this issue.
Well, I couldn't help myself because of what he just said, yeah, better a house for you than a house for your stuff, but if you can't get one done, the other one at least helps till we can get something like that done, and I'm hoping we will, but I'm still a little confused, Tyler, I hate to, you need the exercise anyway, come here. You're saying we can do ten thousand dollars per each request or can we do just only ten thousand dollars?
So Tyler Schroeder, deputy executive, why don't we give a little background in the next council meeting as we reach the purchasing code? I think what we're trying to do here is get the department, your council department to get some input from council members on what budget authorizations, we can walk through the purchasing code in the next couple of meetings, which will be helpful.
So could we be a little more general then and say, money to assist safe storage now?
I wouldn't think we could specify the vendor.
Have to have a number.
We can only allocate the money.
Correct.
Yeah, so...
That's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, so all I'm saying is allocating the money, so, that's the motion, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five to one with Mr. Bird opposed. Next item up is I would like to put in forty-five thousand dollars to assist homeless children or homeless youth to get identification documents in order for them to be able to secure employment and rent apartments and so forth. And I'll provide more details later, but I just want to put it in as a budget item.
Second.
Yeah. Any further question?
Oh.
Yes, Ms. Brenner?
Could you please explain that, I haven't even heard of that, documents.
So one of the major problems in the community, it affects approximately seven percent of all US citizens, is they lack sufficient identification to be able to legally get employment, rent a vehicle, get on an aircraft, or do a hundred, hundred other things, and in the case of males, if a male lacks identification sufficient to get a copy of, to get issued a social security number and they fail to register for selective service before the age of twenty-six, they have both committed a felony and they are denied federal benefits for the rest of their life, just simply because they couldn't get copies of, they couldn't produce identification documents, and it affects half the homeless youth on the streets in this, in this city. Mr. Buchanan?
Forty-five thousand is a very specific amount, I was just curious what that's based on.
That's based on discussions with law advocates, access ID program, and I've had extensive discussions with them on what it would cost to double the size of the group, they do about two hundred people a year, they assist them to get the identification so they can get back on their feet, and forty-five thousand dollars would double that amount that they could do.
Up to friendly amendment to just round it up to fifty?
Sure, I'll take as much as I can get.
That's probably wise.
Right, okay, so, any further discussion, Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds really nice, but I've never heard of it before and I'm not interested, I'm going to abstain, I won't vote against it, but I'm abstaining because I don't know anything about it and it sounds a little vague to me.
I can give you as much detail as you want.
Well, give that to me and then I'll see what I want to do.
Okay, Mr. Donovan?
I'm in favor, I just want to, I'm just tallying up stuff here, so, we are up to about two hundred thousand dollars between Firewise, the lockers, this ID aid, seniors, what we heard earlier today about the mobile needle exchange, that's not counting FTE for implementing the risk assessment or aiding drug court, other things we heard about today, it's probably talking about two or three FTE there, which is another couple hundred thousand dollars probably.
Put things in perspective, two hundred thousand dollars is one tenth of one percent of the total county budget.
Okay, I'm just saying, but...
No, I'm just saying.
I'm, you know, there's other, I mean, we've requested ASRs from specific departments that I also support, so I'm just saying, you know, when it comes to talking about the big picture of the budget, I just...
All right, Mrs. Sudu then, Ms. Brenner?
I was going to say that, yeah, total is fine, this we are proposing, like, like Firewise is not really a council budget or a council department, same as for senior citizens coming out of parks and recreation, I mean, this is what we are proposing to be included in the budget, really, this is part of the budget allocations which administration already does and support these programs, so, you know, one more thing before I quit from here was that we had a legislative assistant position, it's permanent position or do we need to reapprove it? Is it include?
It's permanently in the budget.
Okay.
Mrs. Brenner and then Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, and also, you guys, we get a budget, it looks like that, you've got lots of places you can cut, so, don't even worry about that.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so let's stick to the motion on the floor before we get off and...
I will, actually, what I heard from Mr. Sudu, that this would be coming out of the existing budget, if this is coming out of the existing budget, I won't support it and nor will I support that, if you're going to come and say you're going to cut twenty thousand for some other senior program or parks or rec or whatever, to pay for that, I won't support that, likewise with this, and if you're going to come up with revenues to say these are important things that we need, then I'll support it.
So, if I can respond to that, the cost to provide a homeless youth identification is about a hundred and fifty bucks, the alternative for them is to engage in survival crime and then cycle in and out of jail at about a hundred bucks a day, so the money to pay for this comes from diverting them from going into jail in the first place.
Eventually, that's...
Not eventually, these, if these kids cannot get legal employment, they have to engage in illegal employment.
They're going to cut forty-five thousand dollars from the jail budget to pay for this, no, I'm just, I agree with you that it's a good program, it will have those positive benefits, but it's not just like overnight, we spend forty-five thousand dollars and there's a forty-five thousand dollar savings, I think, maybe it's, it takes a year.
I think it's, I think it's almost instantaneous because the people who, these people who don't have identification cannot get off the streets, period, there is no way to get off the streets because they can't get legal employment, they can't get, they can't rent an apartment, they can't do anything, they can't drive a vehicle, they can't do anything, so they're one, that's one of the reasons we have the homeless population, we do, is that half the kids do not have the identification necessary to even go and work on a farm, the farmers will not hire them if they can't meet the E-Verifying requirements, and again, I'm just putting, this is just a placeholder, I'm happy to provide the council a full presentation on this later on, before, before the council agrees to spend the money, right? Mr. Bird and then Ms. Brenner and then Mr. Sudu.
Go ahead.
I don't know about this program, nor have I ever heard about it, but I will support it with the kids, a hundred and fifty bucks, the, I want to see the data and the rest of the information because it sounds like it's a worthwhile program and so, that gives me, yeah, so that's where I'm at.
Mr. Sudu and then Ms. Brenner.
I was going to say that, Mr. Donovan, that what really happens, this is the whole purpose of budgeting processes, it's not that we are assuming whatever we have been doing last year was all perfect and now we have to rob somebody to give money to new program, actually, it is, it is a process the administration goes through of six or seven months of that, that then they receive these requests and other things, they reevaluate what they have spent, what they have left over, it's not that whatever was budgeted is all spent as well, at some places, they overspend, and this is an exercise every two years they go through and see that what has been working, where there is extra money, or can we support another program within the same budget, so that is an exercise to me, that we are in the preliminary process of putting our requests in, it doesn't mean that they are all approved and we are going to cut something, and that's the process we will know once they come back with the executive's budget, and then we look at it and then we really decide where they cut and why they cut.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, that's why, I mean, this was, there was no, no presentation or anything on this and we're just, I don't think this is a good way to be doing placeholders, given, you know, there's not time that I could look into it ahead of time, and we've got tons of ability to do it during budget time, so to even do it as a placeholder now seems, without any kind of presentation, and I'm sorry, but I trust, but verify it, it's not like I will just say, okay, I trust you, I'll do it, placeholder or not, so, I'm uncomfortable doing it this way for forty-five thousand dollars.
Which of these other programs have we voted on tonight that we've had presentations on?
We had it on the Firewise, we had it, let's see, what was, what was my other one?
I think we already approved, we already voted on it, didn't we?
Yeah, I got my other stuff in on time, but Firewise was a presentation.
Anyway, so...
I'm just uncomfortable doing it this way and I'm going to just abstain.
All right, further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yep.
Okay, so that passes five to, five with one abstention and or Mr. Baloo excused. Mr. Bird?
This process, as far as us requesting information, this is our budget priorities as far as what we want to see within the budget moving forward for the next biennium.
These items would be what I will prepare as part of our budget to submit to the administration, unless I work something out differently with Tyler and Jack prior to and they decide to submit the twenty thousand dollars for senior center through the Parks Department, but otherwise, I will prepare the paperwork and submit it with our budget.
This is, if we look at the budgets, these items would fall under the council's budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion, any other items? Council member updates, Mr. Buchanan, I think, Mr. Bird?
Nope.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, probably, but it's too late.
Donovan? There is Sudu.
Oh, nothing, only thing to report, I've been meeting with a lot of dairy farmers over the last couple of weeks and there's quite discouragement among the people, but I think that's part of life and we shall overcome.
All right, if there's no other business, we are adjourned, thank you.